Michael DeLecky.
Here.
Patrice Steiner.
Here.
Stephen Becker.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
And Dick Bonin.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding the Second Street Community Development Block Grant update. We'll begin with staff presentation.
Okay, the only real update to this project, if you've noticed, we do have an arch at the end of Second Street, a sign identifying the Second Street area. I don't remember the exact wording, Second Street.
Historic.
Historic Second Street. There's a little bit of work to be done on that, some brick along the columns and some other detail work. So, most of the street in electrical and light work was done last year, so this is basically the last part of the project as far as the Second Street reconstruction. So, this is just, would be basically the final opportunity for the public to provide any comments or input regarding that project or theoretically any other potential community development block projects that we may be interested or able to apply for funding. So, this is kind of the last step in that process. Any questions?
Questions? Okay. No one indicated a desire to speak in favor or against. Jack Litkey's asked to speak in general, so Jack, if you'd come forward, please. Let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Jack Litkey. I'm the Executive Director for the Platteville Main Street Program. And I really just wanted to speak to the council tonight to, again, extend the Main Streets appreciation for their foresight in the development of that project. And the end result that came about, I know there was a lot of discussion about whether the street improvement would be a chicken and egg thing, what came first, some improvements to the buildings, to the businesses there, or the street improvements. I think you did an excellent job in making the decision to do the project correctly. Getting the grant to do the amenities, to get the lines put under the ground, I think was an excellent choice. And when you see the arch, I think you'll all be happy when it's finished. It really designates that area. And then to speak to the businesses, we've had businesses on the street make some minor improvements to their building in terms of awnings and some cleanup work there. There's more that needs to be done. I think you'll be thrilled when the new Gina's Bar is finished. That's been completely restored, and I took a tour of that last week. And it'll be a great addition to the Second Street block and bring in entirely different type of clientele other than just a student, or should I say a late night bar crowd, because some of them are not students, obviously. The other thing is the Chicago Best rebuild will have a historic character restoration to that building. That probably would not have happened if the street had not been repaired. They would have gone a different direction. But they agreed with the presentation, and so that building is going to be a real tremendous improvement to that block. So, I think you made the right decision. It's visual, and I think the city will, for years going forward, will enjoy that. And when you're making other improvements to other areas of the city, burying lines under the ground, I think, is the way you should look at going. Thank you.
Thank you. There are other statements. Any council discussions? Motion to close the public hearing will be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It says on the agenda, "Common Council Action," but we're simply required to hold a public hearing to receive citizen views and provide a review of program performance, and so there is no actual action required at this point.
Just like to say that the sign, Howard, looks really nice. And I like, I particularly like the font that was used.
Okay. Thanks. Jeff Baker did a wonderful job.
Who was that who did it, Baker, I wonder?
Okay, moving on, under consideration of consent calendar, the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you'd prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the March 26 council meeting. B, payment of bills. C, financial report. D, appointments I have none tonight. E, licenses, a change of agent for parking spaces LLC Platteville. Julie Klein, agent for premises at 1621 Progressive Parkway. That's Ben Venuto's. And one and or two-year operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic in fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors. Item F is the 2012 fiscal year to 2013 fiscal year budget carryovers. And G is a notice of claim and claim for Colby Olson. Is there any item on the consent calendar in which you prefer separate discussion and action?
Move approval of the consent calendar as presented. Second.
The motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. We ask that you please limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Tonight Jane Peoples would like to speak, so Jane, if you would come forward, please. You state your name and local address, please.
My name is Jane Peoples, and I'm here, oh, my address is 1250 North Elm Street. And I'm here to address North Elm Street. The way they have it set up right now, as you can see on this map that you're getting, wait until you get it. If you look to the north, up on Elm Street, as you're coming down, there's a stop sign there, and there's a new house that's been built. And oftentimes, they have a truck sitting on Highway 81, and there's one parking spot there. I noticed tonight there was a car parked there, and then you can see to the left as cars are turning that corner. But if there's a truck parked there, by the time that vehicle has turned the corner and you're trying to pull out, you can't see that corner, so you're pulling out and there can be a car coming. So, I'm hoping that you can either change it where there's no parking, which would be probably the most severe choice. And the other choice would be making it a car parking rather than not allowing trucks to park there. Does anybody have any questions on what I'm saying?
Yeah, we've addressed.
Yes.
We've addressed that once. The gentleman there wanted, one stall left for his vehicle, but didn't realize it's going to be that truck. Because I go through there a lot, and you can't get through there. It didn't help with the truck being there.
There are lots of places that he can park. He can park on Elm Street. He can park in his driveway. He can park behind him. There's a little driveway between him and the house behind him to the, to the east. So, I, I would think that that's not a problem.
Yeah, it's a situation we're aware of.
Okay. Any other questions?
This is a problem for a long time, because now they're doing brickwork, and so I, their vehicles coming there for the brickwork.
It, it's been a problem since, yes, it is a problem, ever since they've started parking a truck there.
We had others indicate a problem, was it last year sometime?
Yeah.
And we actually changed the no parking to bring it back from the corner, but obviously it puts the truck there. It's not all that helpful. I go past there every day, and it's an issue.
I go by there every day, too. And if it doesn't change, it's just, we're just waiting for an accident to happen. It's going to happen, because you can't see anything when you pull out in that corner. So, somebody's going to get hit if we don't make a change. I thought the last time we talked about this, the guy said, well, he wasn't going to park his truck there. But that's, it's there all the time. And if you don't change it, somebody's going to get hit.
We pushed it back, but it ain't helping.
Shouldn't be parking anywhere along there.
And, and I was with a lady friend who's not familiar with the street, and she started to pull out, and a car almost hit us. And I explained to her that, you know, I'd been meaning to do something about it, so I thought, okay, I'll do something. While I, while I have the floor, I just wanted to thank all of you for serving. I know it's not an easy job. And the other thing is, when they were doing Elm Street, I know it's a year and a half, maybe almost two years out that you've already done that, but I just wanted to praise the people that were working on the street were so thoughtful to the residents. And I had a little issue of water coming in to my house, and it was improper, and they fixed it. And I just, I really appreciate it. It was, it was a pleasant do. I really, I want you to, I want to say thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports tonight.
Actually, Mr. President, I'd like to say a few words.
Okay.
Under citizens' comments, I wanted to come forward. Tonight is the last meeting for Mr. Becker and Mr. DeLecky.
God.
And we have a certificate of appreciation. And I'll start with Mr. Becker. The certificate says, "Thank you for being a community leader and serving on the Platteville Common Council from 2007 to 2013. Your commitment to public service, your donation of many volunteer hours, and your vision for our fine community is and will always be appreciated." And I just wanted.
I'm buying beer. You didn't put in a form to speak, and so I'm going to have to rule you out of order.
I think I speak for everyone when I say that this is a certificate of appreciation for Mr. DeLecky. "Thank you for being a community leader and serving as the president of the Common Council from 2010 to 2013. Your commitment to public service, your donation of many, many volunteer hours, and your vision for our community is and will always be appreciated." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What, are you looking to see if mine says the same thing as yours? Okay. Moving on to reports tonight, under committee reports, Plan Commission, Becker and DeLecky.
Nothing to add.
Neither do I. Public Library Board, Nichols?
Nothing to add.
Museum Board, nothing to add. Tourism Committee, Becker?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Under other reports, we have the Airport Financial Statement for March, the Water and Sewer Revenue and Expense Report for March, the City Attorney Itemized Statement for March, and Department Progress Reports. Is there any item there on which you have questions or comments?
I do. On the City Clerk Report. Jan, could you tell us what the, what your plan is to publicize the Board of Review, open book, and those kinds of things that deal with the assessor and assessment?
Yeah, they'll be publicized in the paper approximately three weeks before we have them.
And the first, the first opportunity is when? People need to know about this Board of Review stuff, I guess.
First opportunity, well, we'll have the assessment rule available for review in the clerk's office on June 25. And then open book will be July 10, and then that will be with the assessor. And then August 7 is the anticipated date of Board of Review. Well, no for sure. We have to bring it into session on May 22, but we won't be listening to any hearings or anything at that point. So, it's August 2, or August 7.
August 7. Ken?
I'll ask my question of the city managers before I bring them to the council.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving then on to action items. Item A was tabled from the last meeting.
Well, I move to bring the issue off the table.
I second, but I didn't know we had to do that.
Well, it was tabled, and we have to bring it off the table. A motion is second to remove this item from the table. Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So, we have item A, Award Project 3-13 for the Fourth Street Reconstruction. We'll begin with the staff presentation, please.
Okay, thank you. This project involves the reconstruction of Fourth Street from Ridge Avenue to Camp Street next to Smith Park. I'd like to explain that according to the DOT's database, the last major work done on this stretch of road was 1964. That's 49 years ago. We believe that the water and sewer is at least as old. There have been no breaks of record, but it is a major link across the city, the north side of the city. During this design, new water main will go on the east side of the street. Storm sewer will be on the west side, starting at Sylvia and working its way south. The city forester was brought in early in the planning process and determined that, due to the water and storm sewer trenches, it is likely that it would damage the roots of up to six trees along the west side of the road, along Smith Park. And it is, it would be highly unlikely for the trees to survive. After that determination, it was then decided to look at a street alignment. And that's when we came up with our original proposed option to straighten the street so that we could get a little bit easier alignment through there. There is no parking lot, as some people may have thought, but the road will, would be narrowed significantly from about 58 feet wide right now to about 36. On February 21, we held a public information meeting specifically for those property owners that had joined the project. And we also invite council members to each of our public information meetings. One person did show up. I had one person ask in an email later when they couldn't show up. What I have for the council's consideration are what I would, what I would call three different options. One, option one, would be to award the bid per the original recommendation, allow the trees to be removed, and in the process, we straighten and narrow the road. Option two would be to award the bid and authorize change orders of approximately $28,500 in order to try to save the trees. The other, the third option would be to reject all bids. We decide not to do work on this street at this time, and then you could direct staff to propose alternate street or streets for consideration. I have looked at it, and the closest one in our CIP right now was Richard Street. It was scheduled for 2014. That's a street that's similar in size and budget to this portion of Fourth Street. I could look at other options, but that one's the easiest and quickest one. We do not have any engineering done on that street as of yet. If we were to do Richard Street instead, the proposed timeline would be from July to end of September would probably be the actual construction if we did that street. Based on everything that, that I've looked at and the comments that I've received, and I have received a number of them, I would still recommend that we go ahead and award the bid per the original recommendation. Barring that, I would say that we should probably do option three.
Thank you, Howard. Questions for Howard?
Well, option three is just don't do anything with the fourth, with this street now?
That's correct.
What, what's that going to accomplish? I mean, it's just putting the question that we're talking about right now off for another year? Is that all you're saying? I mean, the street needs to be done.
I agree. The street needs to be done.
I don't think we should put it off. I think we should decide what we're going to do with the tree. The street needs to be fixed. So, I don't think option three is a good option.
You mean switching to Richard Street?
Right.
Okay. Did you want to report, Howard, on the Water and Sewer Commission vote?
Oh, Water and Sewer Commission met yesterday, and, and they recommended that the council approve option one, the original recommendation. The Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee reluctantly also approve, also recommends option one.
Okay, other questions?
There, has the Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee met since? Because I thought last time you said that there wasn't actually a meeting, because there wasn't actually a quorum of people. Or did I get that wrong?
It was Safe Routes.
Safe Routes.
That didn't have a quorum that night. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation had a quorum. They met and, and voted to approve option one. At that time, I did not have an option three for them or the cost for an option two.
Other questions? Two people indicated they'd like to speak to this, Chris Mahoney and Ariane Rashidi. If you would please come forward, state your name and local address. And while they do that, I'll note that Darby Shay Cruiser and Anthony Hubbell and Cyrus Rozazada have all registered and said that they oppose this, or at least the original option. If you state your name and local address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Okay. My name is Chris Mahoney. I live at 1015 North Fourth Street. That is where Camp basically dead ends on Fourth Street, so one of the first houses will be affected for this project. I, I'm really questioning the wisdom of this project. I understand that work needs to be done. But I, I really feel like that in hearing that there was potentially not enough, enough information for the Parks and the Forestry Board to hear all the options, I feel like maybe we should reexamine and let them see more options on the table. In my opinion, I think that the, those who use that park and those who are in or around that park realize the value of the trees, not just the aesthetic value, but also the shade that does provide for the pool and the pool parking area. Because without those trees, it would significantly heat up cars that park along there. I think the trade-off that was proposed for the green space is really a non-issue because it doesn't really give much in the sense of appearance to the, the actual pool and the pool parking area. The, the potential for more parking is maybe not a bad trade-off, but I think that, in my opinion, that if you were to straighten the jog, which is one of the things that was kind of, sounds like an add-on, I really don't see how that would slow down traffic. I, in my opinion, I feel it would speed up. My wife was actually the one who had the email comments. We were out of town for that February meeting, so I would have represented our concerns at that time. And it really is, was unclear from the answers that my wife had received from the questions she sent through email of what actually was going to happen to that little strip, and was really confusing as to how the road was going to be straightened. And I, in kind of understanding how we're get to this point, I really think that we didn't have enough information at that February meeting, at least in the answers that we, we had and given were given. Lastly, the point is that if Platteville is going to be, you know, named a tree city, I think it's really hypocritical for cutting down fairly large trees. In the report that I read before coming to the meeting, that they would say that in 50 years' time, that's the, the park would, Smith Park would have the same sort of problems where we'd have aging trees that are not being replaced. I think that is a valid point. But I think that if, if there's a real legitimate concern about the age of the trees, then things should be done now to initiate more plantings as opposed to taking down very little trees and then replacing them with, with smaller ones. I just, I really question the wisdom. I understand we don't want to kick the can down the road for option three, but maybe something like option two would be a preferable one, and I would really prefer that the forestry department, the forestry, the parks, get more information. They can hear those proposals, which it sounds like they didn't have that information at the time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't understand what the six trees got to do with the swimming pool.
Fourth Street? The, yeah, the, yeah.
The park trees got to do with the swimming pool. That's 300, 400 feet.
Yeah, but when the, yes, that's true. But how the, the sun comes down through, through the, the trees that it offers, those trees on that side offer shade to the, the pool, the pool parking lot area. And I know that because I live there, and I use the pool. I know that, that that's, that those trees offer the shade for that side of the, that side of the park and that side of the parking lot, and then as the sun even goes further down.
Okay, if, if you're saying that to me, then you've got another 246 trees behind that doing the same thing.
Very true.
Okay. Point taken.
All right. State your name and local address, please.
Hi there, my name's Ariane Rashidi, 1150 Foxridge Road, apartment number six. Hello and good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city of Platteville. I'm not here to ask you to vote in either way, but to ask you to postpone this decision for two to three months to put forth our due diligence and see if we can't find the win-win arrangement in all this. I see room for compromise on both sides. $9,000 seems like a lot of money to spend for a redesign when, and I heard $5,000 for a root inspection or something, that's a lot of money to spend on intangibles, I guess, at this point. But I think the alternatives could be explored more, maybe even moving the trees. I don't know how expensive that is or not, but I think it's premature to make a decision at this point. So, that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Howard, I have a question. That, we would have retained stop signs at that intersection regardless of the design, is that correct?
Yes.
So, there's not going to be a speeding traffic issue? Everyone's still going to have to stop regardless?
Yes.
Mike, can we ask Dan to come up and explain why straightening that out, what the purpose is? Why it has to be done?
Sure.
Dan?
Dan Drossens with Delta 3 Engineering. You asked about the, the benefits of straightening out the road. Essentially, if you look at how the, the road is aligned currently, as you start from the south, work your way to the north, from Camp Street to Sylvia Street, the, the road is on the west side of the right-of-way. The block between Sylvia Street and Ridge Avenue, it's kind of in the, the middle of the right-of-way. And then when you get up north of Camp, excuse me, Ridge Avenue, the right-of-way and the street has actually shifted further to the east. So, really what you have, and this has been ongoing since the 40s. We pulled up an aerial photograph, and that's the way it was then. And all they did was just keep reconstructing the street back in the 60s or whenever they redid it. So, when we looked at the condition of the trees, and we brought the concerns to city staff about digging next to these, these six large trees, the, the, the point was made that no matter what we do, there's a pretty good chance that they're not going to survive. We're going to be digging, you know, anywhere from six to eight feet deep around their roots. Everybody knows that, actually, I'll just use an example. If you drive up to the Oak Haven subdivision, which is up by Knollwood, it was developed back in 2004. And they called it Oak Haven because there's a lot of oak trees up in that area. And the developer built roads around trees. And I would say that 50 to 60% of those trees that they built the roads around have now died. And it's because oak trees are very susceptible to, to damage to their roots, and, and they just don't survive. So, once we, we talked with the city staff, in specific, the city forester, and they said, well, there's a pretty good chance they're going to pass away. We looked at realignment options. One option, which was the not selected option by city staff, was to basically have a jog at Sylvia Street and then have another jog up closer to Ridge Avenue. Pretty much defeated the purpose of trying to reconstruct the road and make it a, a better alignment. We looked at it at a larger scale, and when you drew a straight line from halfway between Camp and Sylvia Street to the intersection of Ridge and Fourth Street, it basically cut off that corner, affected those six trees. However, it did allow for a nice aligned alignment. Right now, that movement that we have going north to south, south to north, however you want to say, at Sylvia Street, you basically have to drive, you have to take a right-hand turn, and then straighten, take a left, and go straighten out. I realize that jogs are all over the city of Platteville. Not saying that they're right, though, either. From an engineering standpoint, a nice aligned, straight street is obviously the safest street. We will have stop conditions at that intersection, so traffic speed will not be an issue. There are a lot of kids that cross back and forth between the park and the pool. So, a squared-up intersection obviously allows for better sight distance for, for seeing those pedestrians.
Questions for Dan?
Dan, I have a, I have a question about a different area. Can you tell me what, at the junction of Fourth and Ridge, that corner now has Can you tell me what, at the junction of Fourth and Ridge, that corner now has been, I, the one on the park side, looks like it's been made into a high-speed, speed around the corner.
That radius?
Yeah.
That radius is designed more for larger trucks to be able to go, so they can turn that, make that corner without having to swing wide into the intersection.
And where would large, why, I mean?
The, it doesn't, I mean, large trucks, it doesn't matter. I mean, we're talking, not say garbage trucks, but anybody pulling a trailer, coming around that corner. We don't want to have the same situation that we have right now, and that's the way, it was designed this way, as at Chestnut Street and Adams Street, because we had that problem right there, that's a tight radius. Of course, that has heavy truck traffic, but you still have people pulling a camper, a lawnmower, trailer, that type of, and that radius is large enough for vehicles to get around it.
I will say that the call I've had on this street dealt with the significant amount of trucks that use Ridge and Sylvia and whatever that street is to cut through from 80 to 81 and back and forth. And the people that have talked to me have talked more about how to design these so that it makes that more difficult.
Well, they also have buses too.
Yeah, there's buses that utilizes too, but.
I'm just saying.
Right, right.
These are concerns that have been raised.
Right.
And you said that the reconstructed Fourth Street would be 36 feet wide. Is that the standard width for parking on both sides of the road?
For the city of Platteville and residential areas, yes it is. So, all of the new.
The Holman is 36 feet, all of the streets that we're reconstructing are 36 feet?
Correct. Jewett Street last year was the only one that we narrowed up, but that's because that was the, the intent was to reduce the amount of parking on that area. But all of the other streets that we've been doing residential areas have been 36 feet wide.
I have a question for you, Dan. And I don't know if this is just rumor, but the report says that there is possibly a developer looking to purchase the old radio station parcel to put in multifamily housing. I guess my one concern about this, and it has nothing to do with the trees, if we spend this $440,000 on this project, and then they go ahead and start this development, we're going to have a lot of truck traffic coming through there. And therefore, would it damage, would it cause damage to a new road after we've just put it in?
It won't, because we're going to design it for some truck traffic. The typical section that we have for the city of Platteville's streets right now is able to handle truck traffic, not sustained truck traffic like you would see on an industrial park road or in a high-traffic volume area. We've talked with a couple of the people that have been looking at that property, and they're going to be doing a lot of their heavier work this summer, if the project goes. However, if it would wait a couple of years, or it takes a couple of years to build, which I don't think it will, that may be a consideration to hold off the project. However, we are having provisions in this project to provide for something to happen in that lot. We've got a water main stub aligned in a proper, in a location where it could be stubbed in the property. And we've already mentioned to a couple of the people that are interested in this project or that property, excuse me, about aligning their driveway with Ridge Avenue, so that we don't have a lot of, we don't have offsets with the driveways. Trying to line it up similar to what College Drive was in that East, excuse me, West Main Street project.
If a developer damaged the street, then the city has recourse to get damages to repair the street.
Typically, yes.
We did that with Madison Street, and would the same thing be holding here?
Correct. Now, yes, yes, you would be able to. There is, a couple of the proposals that we've seen, I think they would just be staff review of the projects, because there's zoning and there's no PUD and of that type of sort, but I still think that's a.
That's a standard, correct, Howard?
Yes. Plus, we would ask that they use Ridge Avenue for most of their entrance and exit of heavy vehicles, and that would impact the new road the least, rather than having them come down forth or do anything like that.
Questions for Dan?
Dan, you're saying that if we put the new road in exactly where the existing road is, so from Sylvia to Ridge, where those trees are, if we put it in right where it is now, we're saying that the chances of the trees surviving, less than 50%?
Correct.
Yes.
What if we, what if that, what if you moved it two foot, three foot, whatever, west?
East.
I mean, yeah, east.
There is an option too.
I mean, how much would you have to do it to keep the trees in there? I mean, we got a jog in there now, that's what, four, five foot?
Yeah.
If it was, if it was six foot?
Right up.
I mean, there's plenty of room on the far side, I mean, by, where the swimming pool is. I mean, there's all kinds of room over there on that side. I mean, could we, how far would we have to move the street east to have the trees to have better than 50% survival rate?
The rule of thumb is that the roots extend out to the drip line of the, of the tree, and I believe two of the trees, the drip line extends almost to the middle of the existing street right now. So, if we would want to increase our chances of having those trees make it through construction, then we would want to move the street that far to the east. In the option number two that I provided to Howard to look at, and it's actually, I think it was included maybe in your packets, we narrowed up the street four or five feet further than what it is now to try to avoid that, and try to still accomplish some of the goals of the alignment, the realignment.
Doing that, then, would cost $28,500 more than the original project, is that right?
Correct.
And there's still no guarantee the trees are going to survive?
Correct.
And a lot of those trees are essentially at the end of their lifespan anyway, are they not?
According to the city forester, that was his opinion.
Wow, okay. Other questions for Dan?
If you move that street to the east, then, how far can you move it without interfering with the parking stalls that we was hoping they have saved in the park for eventual, 17 stalls, but how much, if we move them too far, we knock that chance out the window too?
Correct. In the option that I provided, the alternate option, that, that parking area was not easily built. In order to obtain those parking stalls in that pool parking lot, you would have to remove the medians that are in the pool, the separation medians in the pool parking lot. If you removed all of those and just paved them across, then you'd have enough room to maintain parking. The current parking plus 17 additional stalls is, that's how it would work.
That's something we was thinking about for in the future, if we needed it then.
Correct. That was, yeah, yep. That was, that was an option, so that we could try to, even though that's not part of this project, to increase the size of the parking lot, we didn't want to lose that option in the future.
Any other questions for Dan?
The concern about moving the street over is when we do have bus traffic and other large vehicles, we, we can't move it over so far that, that we interfere with the turning movements of those vehicles, and we just need to be real careful about how far we can move it over. Dan and his crew have, have looked at it and, and I think he's moved it over about as far as he can without, without impacting turning of buses and long vehicles like he was talking about earlier.
There is an option to avoid the park, but that's going to involve acquiring private property. That house that's at the southeast corner of Sylvia and Fourth Street, if that property owner was willing to, to lose their front yard, and maybe even the second house down, would lose part of their yard as well, then we could really swing it out there. But both of those houses don't have a large front yard, so kind of looking into a homeowner's eyes, I.
I just want to kind of, the city forester has looked at these trees, and they're essentially at the end of their lifespans.
They're, they're beyond middle age. He's saying that most of the, most of the 250 trees or, that are in the park right now are at and beyond what I would consider middle age. We're saying that if we do nothing, that most of those trees will probably die off in the next 30 to 40 years, regardless of what we, what we end up doing. So, I mean, it's, you know, in the lifespan of a tree, 30 to 40 years is, is not a whole lot, but it, it is compared to us humans.
So, if we replace the street as is, we're betting $28,500 against it, the hope that these trees will live a really, really long time?
Well.
Thank you.
Well, on option B, Dan, the Sylvia Street, Fourth Street intersection, that's what you're talking about with acquiring private property?
Correct.
Yeah, because the way, we looked at it at the Water and Sewer Commission meeting yesterday, and with option B, I did not like how that intersection turned out, it's too narrow. I think, because school buses are going to obviously be turning there probably both directions, and it's, makes it really narrow.
It does.
Option B, just a clarification, option B does not acquire property from.
Right.
The property owners.
Right.
We moved it over about as far as we could without having to do that.
But they meet all design, excuse me, option B or option two, I think it's called on here, meets all design standards, right, I mean, for safety for turning vehicles?
It does.
Okay.
Yep.
But it narrows the road to 24 feet.
24 feet of pavement, 28 feet total width, with the curbs.
And so, give me another road in Platteville, what's that width?
We just redesigned Valley Road two years ago, and it's 28 feet back-to-back, I believe, so it'd be the same cross-section as Valley Road, which is designed for heavy trucks. So, Valley Road is the one, is a road that goes from Business 151 to East Monroe Street.
So, there would just not be parking in that, but it's not an incredibly narrow road?
No.
Any other comments or questions for Dan? One other person's indicated they want to speak. I don't want to keep taking people as they want to kind of rebut stuff, Evan Larson's asked to speak. Evan, please come forward, state your name and local address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Hi, my name's Evan Larson, and I live at 1010 Seventh Avenue. I work a lot with trees and oak trees. If they're 100 years old, they're not middle-aged. They can live a lot longer. I walk a lot in this city, and it's hot in the summer. How many of you think we need less shade? That doesn't make sense to me, especially when you say that the drip line goes out halfway across the street. That keeps the whole area cooler. I think that's important. I think that if we're looking at a 58-foot street, and we can narrow it substantially, and I know that the jog needs to be considered, but narrow it on the side of the trees, I think that just straightening the road, and I know that you, you've gone through the bidding process, but if you rebid it and said, save the trees, and the lowest bidder gets the job, or however these are decided, I would guess you'd probably get some pretty creative I really enjoy trees, so I'm speaking kind of like the Lorax at this point, I guess. But it seems, it seems that in the short time that I've been in this community, we've had far more trees cut down along our streets, because they are getting old, and that's true, than have been planted. Maybe I'm not seeing the young trees. But if you're going to replace 100 or 120-year-old oak tree, maybe older, I'd be happy to court and let you know how old it is. With a six-inch maple or something like that, I mean, you're diminishing the character of that area. Yes, there are other trees there, but they're not over the walking path and they're not over the street.
Aren't we planning on replacing the trees?
I agree, and in 100 years, they'll look just as nice. I think, I mean, I think, I think, yes, we should plant more trees in the park, but it seems like if we're working to narrow the street, there should be some way to, yeah, compromise and have, at least give them a shot. It doesn't make sense to me to cut them down if, if that's the case. So, I would, I would, I would strongly argue that the trees add character and are important in terms of the character of the city, and that we should seek a rebid on the project.
Thank you. Okay, other discussion here?
I have a couple of comments. I've had people contact me about this situation with the trees, and some have said the trees should be taken down, and some have said the trees should remain, remain. I'm on the Parks Recreation Fourth Street Committee, and we voted to remove the trees and straighten the road. That's option one. Water and Sewer voted yesterday to select option one. It was not unanimous, it was three to one. I'm still in favor of option one. I, I like trees, love trees, plant a lot of trees, but I'm looking at the future. I'd like to see perhaps 30 trees planted from the funds that are available from this particular contract. The Park Recreation Committee, they voted a one-for-one replacement. The Water and Sewer Commission voted two to one. I think we ought to be replacing trees, the six trees, at a five-to-one ratio. So, to me, it's planting for the future. I realize we're losing the trees here that are old, and the oaks, some of those oaks can live for much longer yet, they're, they're not that short-lived. And so, I think, in my opinion, I'd still vote for option number one. Two, I don't like option two, I don't like option three, and so I'd vote for option one. And I realize this is an emotional thing, a hard decision, but the road needs to be repaired, and so I think we need to proceed, and there is a good probability that some of the trees will be gone. I looked at some of the trees out there, as far as seeing that they have dead limbs in them already, especially the maple, one or two maples. So, those are my comments.
Anything else? Somebody care to make a motion?
I would move that we select option one and plant, do you want a motion?
No, I'm just thinking, do we actually have a motion, a specific motion, or do we table this as an item? Do you remember, Jan?
Just tabled it.
Okay. Go ahead, Ken.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah.
My motion is to select option one and to replace the trees at a ratio of five to one. And these would be with oak trees, and replace the trees in parks, Smith Park and other parks within the city.
Thank you. The motion is second discussion?
So, Mike, for purposes of clarification, this is a motion to approve awarding a contract, right?
Right.
Yes.
And is that option, is that part of your motion?
Yes.
To award it to?
This is option one.
Rule construction.
Rule construction.
Okay. In other words, yeah, rule construction.
Rule and Lawndale. It's split in two parts, but yes, okay.
And Lawndale Brothers.
And that's, Dick, that's your understanding, that's the motion?
When you say five to one, you're suggesting five trees for every one taken out, is that what you're saying?
It'd be 30 trees.
And what size tree are you putting in there? I mean, you're talking a five-inch tree?
We're talking about what we talk about, Howard, for a size.
Four to five inch?
Four to five inch.
Five-inch trees, so how many trees?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's a.
30 trees? Do we have money? Does the tree come in with money?
There's extra money. Howard can answer that question. There's extra money in the budget. It came in under budget.
The, the, the project did come in under budget, so there is room within the budget to allow for, for that.
For 30 trees?
It'd be $15,000.
Can we move the street for that? Yeah, it would be, as Ken said, approximately fifteen thousand trees, or fifteen thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars, roughly.
Yeah.
Yes, and there's room in the budget to do that.
I'd like to see us replace the ones with the five-inch calipers, that maybe put some smaller ones in, and a little more bang for a buck that way. Because just because there's room in the budget, doesn't mean we ought to turn around and spend it.
And that was in a variety of different parks, it's not all in the same...
No, it's be different parks.
Okay. You could put one and one-and-a-half-inch diameter trees in and get them started, and start a process of getting some varied longevity.
I would say that I was pleased with the fact that we did receive option two, and I think option two, for me, was a win-win. It allows the trees an opportunity to survive. Pretty, you know, trees can be pretty hardy, so I, I was on their side. The, the street as it's designed, and option two, I think, gives us what we want. Yes, there's a jog, and that may not be what an engineer would normally prefer, but we do have other streets that have jogs, it's safe, it allows good access for everything that we're trying to do, it keeps the parking that's there, and it gets the street done that needs to be done. So, Ken, due respect to your, to your motion, I would, will prefer to option two.
Any other comments?
Yeah, and when you start looking at the cost of, the additional cost of that option two, well, it's not much more than the fifteen thousand you want to spend on the thirty new trees, so I like option two. There's gonna be a cost no matter what.
I wish we'd just replaced the sixth, then come back at some point with a tree replacement plan that may be more coherent, more specific about what we're gonna do.
Well, I respect Ken and his knowledge of trees, and I would support Ken's motion.
Any other comments? I'd have one clarification. Again, Howard, what are we talking about in terms of total money to do what Ken proposed?
Uh, we're looking at an additional fifteen thousand dollars above the, above the current project bid prices.
Okay, is there a budget item someplace in our budget for trees? I don't mean in this project, I mean in the general overall budget. I seem to recall we had a line item for that.
There's a small, there's a small budget for forestry. Some of that is for trees, tree removal, stump grinding, things like that. There isn't a specific line that says that this much is, is for trees, but we do have fifteen hundred dollars for materials and supplies.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We, we do not have enough money in the budget to replace trees. That's a problem here. We do street work, and we do not put in trees. The trees that go back don't need to be the same as the one taken out. When I say same, they, they may be large trees and inappropriate for that particular street. They may be, the power lines may be interfering with them, so they may be picking small trees, medium-sized trees, so it's gonna vary. But again, as I said just recently, we need to be having a replacement of trees.
Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
I, I do have a question. I do have a question on the, other people have spoken to option two, and there wasn't much investigation of that, but in terms of, the trees would still have to be treated, is that correct?
For option two.
Of the options, the alternate design talked about two options to improve the chance of tree survival, saw cutting the roots, and saw cutting and painting the roots, and having a fungicide treatment.
That was one of the suggestions that was in, in there, and the idea with the fungicide would be to reduce the possibility of oak wilt disease. That's a, that's a fungus that's transmitted through cuts and sores in trees, especially in the roots, and that it can kill off a whole lot of trees all at once. It gets passed from one tree to the next.
Okay, and the fungicide treatment, instead, was five thousand dollars. I mean, that would be, if, if you adopt an option two, you would also need to adopt a plan, right, to either saw cut, both saw cut and paint the roots, and do the fungicide in order to have a chance of survival of the trees.
That was, that was the recommendation, yes.
You have to do something even with option one.
Either way, you have to do it.
Well, option one, the trees are just going.
They still have to have the roots treated, because I, what'd you call it, the roots intermingle, or they connect, Ken, or what was the term?
They graft, they graft to each other.
That's what it was.
Well, the, the city forester may still select the use of the fungicide in option one.
So, that cost is there no matter what we do?
Five thousand dollars.
So, that five thousand is there no matter which way it goes?
You might say that's a sunk cost.
Yeah, do something regardless.
Sunk, it's a sunk cost. So, is that included in the bid, Howard? No, that's an addition.
That was not included in the bid.
That was not included, so Ken's motion, awarding the contract, doesn't include fungicide.
That's correct. The, the forester believed that if we remove the trees and, and get rid of the stumps, that we would have, there would be less opportunity for that fungus to travel and go into those other trees at that point. That was, that was the idea under option one, is, is you physically remove the trees, remove the, the roots, the root ball, stump grind, and, and it would, you would probably not need to do the fungicide for option one.
Probably not need to, or you would not do?
He was, he was not going to recommend, he was not going to recommend the fungicide under option one.
Okay, so under option one, the trees are removed, there's no saw cutting, there's no fungicide, it's just take the trees down, hope that by, I'm just trying to get, hope by grinding out the root or whatever, grinding out the stump, that that takes care of it?
Yes.
Okay. Ken, is that what you understood?
Yes, but you have to do some treatment.
And the cost of grinding out the stumps is in here?
No. Uh, Ken, did you say that you, that you understood there was no fungicide?
I said, regardless of what you do, option one or two, you have to do something as far as oak wilt. It may include a fungicide for both situations, oak option one, option two. City forester has to decide.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Doss?
No.
Nichols?
No.
Bonan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for all your comments tonight. It's good democracy when that kind of thing happens. Moving on to item B tonight, we have award project ten-dash-thirteen, rent cropland in Industry Park. Staff, presentation, please.
Yes, this is a contract to rent out the vacant land of the Industry Park for uses of cropland. We opened three bids, as shown. Samuel Kaiser of Cuba City had the highest bid, five thousand two hundred sixty-five per year for all three of the lease years. Based on Pedic's recommendation, crops are restricted to low-growing crops such as hay or soybeans, and the Pedic Board did, in fact, review this at their last meeting and recommend approval to Mr. Kaiser.
I would move to award contract ten-thirteen for the Industry Prop, Heart, Cropland Rental to Mr. Kaiser.
Second.
The motion is second discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item three under action tonight is resolution thirteen-dash-ten, authorizing the partial redemption of general obligation promissory notes dated April fifteenth, two thousand nine. Staff, presentation, please.
Uh, we recently sold a significant amount of money. We borrowed four million one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars last month, and a portion of that money was used for refunding prior loans. As a result of the sale, we ended up with the need to shift seventy-five thousand dollars. As the sale occurred, we ended up with extra money that we were left with, and we planned to use that money to pay off additional existing debt within ninety days of the closing, and so we just wanted City Council to be aware of the need to pay off the debt with that extra proceeds, and so we ask you to approve the resolution enclosed.
So, we got more than we asked for, is that what you're saying?
Well, the funds were originally intended to be appropriated differently, and we're not able to do that. Our bond legal counsel said you cannot use that seventy-five thousand dollars in that manner, you have to use it to pay off your additional debt. So, to answer your question, it wasn't unexpected, we knew that we had that as a proceeds from the bond sale, but now we're changing what the use would be for that seventy-five thousand, and we're gonna pay off more debt with it.
So, very good plan. Motion approved.
Second.
The motion by Becker, second by Steiner, to approve, any other discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D tonight is a resolution number thirteen-dash-eleven, authorizing the sale of Industry Park land to Timmerman Brothers Property LLC. Melissa Paul is here from Pedic, and if you would come forward and explain this to us, please.
Melissa Paul, Executive Director of the Platteville Area Industrial Development Corporation. And the owners, the potential owners are here today, which I wanted to, to point out. They are looking at a one-point-one acre parcel at three fifty-five Enterprise. They're proposing a twelve-thousand-square-foot industrial facility that will bring five jobs. They did look at other lots in the area. They have an existing company in Keeler that has been in business since nineteen eighty-nine. I think it's a great use for that lot. It's, it's a, would be a challenging lot for somebody coming in that has a much larger business, fits perfectly on the lot. We've worked with them for several months, and it's a good match for what's going on in the industrial park. It's not gonna be an impact to our wastewater or any challenges like that, so I think it's a very good use. The current land price formula worked in our favor for this. It allowed Platteville to be more competitive, and I believe allowed us to secure them as a business. I'm excited about them coming in, they're already existing, they've proven their success, they're growing, so they are looking to get under construction as quickly as possible so they can be up and running as quickly as possible.
What kind of business is it, Melissa?
Where, I don't know where that came from.
Patrice.
They, they, it's paper products. They bring in bulk rolls of paper products, and they cut them down and resize them for industrial use. They actually serve the, the dairy industry highly. So, it's complimentary to what we have in the industrial park, which is also, which is also a benefit.
I believe, if I'm not wrong, Trucking Company and Southwest Logistics, I think, does some of their hauling, or they used to.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, that's good.
Other questions for Melissa?
I make a motion, we approve resolution thirteen-dash-eleven, authorizing the sale of Industry Park land to Timmerman Brothers Properties LLC. Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item three under action tonight is resolution thirteen-dash-ten, authorizing the sale of Industry Park land to Timmerman Brothers Properties LLC. Melissa Paul is here from Pedic, and if you would come forward and explain this to us, please.
Melissa Paul, Executive Director of the Platteville Area Industrial Development Corporation. And the owners, the potential owners are here today, which I wanted to, to point out. They are looking at a one-point-one acre parcel at three fifty-five Enterprise. They're proposing a twelve-thousand-square-foot industrial facility that will bring five jobs. They did look at other lots in the area. They have an existing company in Keeler that has been in business since nineteen eighty-nine. I think it's a great use for that lot. It's, it's a, would be a challenging lot for somebody coming in that has a much larger business, fits perfectly on the lot. We've worked with them for several months, and it's a good match for what's going on in the industrial park. It's not gonna be an impact to our wastewater or any challenges like that, so I think it's a very good use. The current land price formula worked in our favor for this. It allowed Platteville to be more competitive, and I believe allowed us to secure them as a business. I'm excited about them coming in, they're already existing, they've proven their success, they're growing, so they are looking to get under construction as quickly as possible so they can be up and running as quickly as possible.
What kind of business is it, Melissa?
Where, I don't know where that came from.
Patrice.
They, they, it's paper products. They bring in bulk rolls of paper products, and they cut them down and resize them for industrial use. They actually serve the, the dairy industry highly. So, it's complimentary to what we have in the industrial park, which is also, which is also a benefit.
I believe, if I'm not wrong, Trucking Company and Southwest Logistics, I think, does some of their hauling, or they used to.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, that's good.
Other questions for Melissa?
I make a motion, we approve resolution thirteen-dash-eleven, authorizing the sale of Industry Park land to Timmerman Brothers Properties LLC. Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing you being open. Okay, under information and discussion tonight, we have item A, which is a resolution establishing the building Platteville Green Program. We discussed this at a work session, and after some staff evaluation of this, they've come back with this proposal, of course. Item B is borrowing resolution, revenue obligation trust fund loan for TID number six, Economic Development Incentive for Emmy Roth. And by the way, there is a, a loan that helped the Emmy Roth project go forward. There's been some misinformation going around that somehow the citizens of Platteville are paying for that. When a TIF district funding process is used, what happens is the revenue gains from the business going in pay back the loans, and it doesn't come out of the Platteville taxpayer pocket to do that. If you don't have the development, you don't have the loan, and you don't have the payment, and you don't have the tax base. So, this idea that this is some other kind of loan is not the case.
If I could elaborate a little bit, on this one, what we're doing is we're filing paperwork with the state of Wisconsin to get a, a revenue bond, and we're gonna take the state of Wisconsin's interest rate and then market that locally to local banks to see if we can get a better deal. So, the first step in this is to get a resolution approved by the council to the state of Wisconsin.
Okay, thank you. Item C is the tourism entity, excuse me, entity agreement, it's the revised version. It'll come up in two weeks. Item D...
Excuse me, I, I don't know what the difference is, I was trying to read the revised tourism entity agreement, and there are three statements here, and I'm just wondering if, if we could have like a side-by-side, what got changed? I mean, how was it revised?
It was revised by the representative of the chamber. I can ask for some comparison.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why the revisions.
Show the changes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Question on the, the third item on the first page. Has the city in the past taken from room tax money costs for collecting the room tax?
No.
So, I was wondering why that was, why number three was put in.
Okay. And in the drawings that were provided, it's difficult for me to, uh, uh, one of them has the north-south marking on it. The other one does not. So if somebody can tell me and their streets aren't marked. So it does this building, and then there's a drawing of the building. So does the building sit with the broadside to highway one fifty-one?
Yes.
Yes.
And the parking lot behind it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's gonna be the entrance.
That's, that's what I thought, but that's.
In fact, I'm gonna give you these things off my packet to take with tonight so you'll have a copy of it in a heartbeat.
There you go.
I mean, I can look at them, but I'm like, I don't get how it's actually looked.
It's harder on a small screen to see the whole thing.
I have a question. I have a question on this proposal, um. In the second paragraph, it says the height of retaining walls varies from less than one foot to about five and a half feet. I mean, they're gonna dig into the hillside more than that, so there has to be a lot more retaining wall than that.
There's two of them.
There's two walls.
Two, there's two, yes.
They're stepped.
They're stepped up.
Well, they're, they're, you're just saying that, uh, they're gonna place these low retaining walls on top of the steps.
No, the retaining walls are the steps.
Right.
How can you have a retaining wall that's only, it's only a foot high?
Well, it, it gets deeper and deeper as you go along.
It tapers as the ground goes. If the ground rises, it's tapering up to the ground. So it, it starts at five feet and then it levels off as the ground drives in front. There's two walls that wrap around the building.
That's these things?
I think so.
So the walls are on highway one fifty-one and?
And they wrap around on Virgin.
On Virgin? You don't have a three D picture of how that's gonna look.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's, the, the building is not exactly, it was a earlier version of the building, but there is a three D.
The land, the, the land slopes across the front and you don't need five feet, the whole width. It starts at one and gets larger and larger and larger until it gets up to five feet.
But at the back, you need a lot more than five feet.
Okay. Item E is a.
Terrace?
Yes. What do we call it? Step? It's terrace.
Terrace.
Okay. It's terrace. Item E is a sidewalk waiver. This is for the same property. Uh, the, uh, the question that we raised was in essence the, the one that we thought that Safe Routes would have raised, which is, uh, they have a sidewalk that comes down, Virgin Avenue and that cuts across the property between the parking lot and the building and then exits out on Ellen Street, if I have my streets right.
Right.
And the request that we had was that that be designated and allowed as a public sidewalk so that the, uh, you wouldn't necessarily have the sidewalk in the front. There's the terracing in the front, but that would still give people who were coming down Virgin Avenue who wanted to get over to where Walgreens is a way to get across there without having to come down to one fifty-one to do it. And so our request was that sidewalk be designated as a public access sidewalk and that is apparently okay. And so that's that sidewalk waiver. Item F is to award project eight dash thirteen highway painting. I'm sure this will have a great deal of discussion. And G is award project nine dash thirteen weed and grass mowing, also a very popular controversial topic.
Although I do have a question because the one bid is so much less than the other bids and, um, just wondering if you have any information or?
Using goats.
You're talking, uh, to weed and grass?
Yes.
I understand, um, we've, we've done some checking and, uh, this person has been in business for a while and has, and has local customers who, uh, who use this service and are pleased with him and his service. And so we're accepting that, uh, he can do it for that amount of money.
Okay, thanks.
Very good.
Isn't this the same, same guy that dropped the tree on Water Street a few years ago?
I do not know that.
I think so. Okay.
Is that a problem?
I don't know. It wasn't there when the tree fell.
Um, before we go into work session, I'd like to say it's been an honor. Uh, we've always tried to, or at least I've always tried to do what's best, I think, for the city and it's been, uh, an honor to be able to be in a position to do that. I think Steve would probably say the same thing. He, he's a fewer words than I am, so, uh, at this point in the meeting.
Mr. DeLucky?
Yes.
Before you go to that, can I make an announcement?
Sure, sure.
We all, we all know that Plattville is a great place to be and a great place to live, but now the rest of America gets to know. Um, city of Plattville, our communication specialist has applied for some awards for the city of Plattville and we are once again, uh, considered across the nation as one of the all-American cities. Um, through this competition, they've named twenty communities as finalists for all-American city, uh, for the United States. And, uh, Wisconsin, Plattville is the only city in the state of Wisconsin to be considered and we are among nineteen other communities. Uh, we will find out about the award, uh, in the middle of June. Um, but we do have to send a group of people to Denver, Colorado to do a presentation. Um, the award is being, uh, recommended for the city of Plattville because it spotlights community-wide initiatives that honor and benefit veterans and military families. And, uh, the city of Plattville has done a significant amount of work honoring veterans and their families recently. And so, uh, this has qualified us for this award. This was a grant that was put together, excuse me, an award that was put together with a lot of, uh, cooperation from our community partners. I sat in on a few of the meetings and I know that the, the Ed White from Plattville Business Incubator, Melissa Paul from Paydick, um, as well as Jack Ludkey and, um, Kathy Kopp from the Chamber. Uh, we've all participated in helping to draft this, but, uh, the cheerleader of the organization was certainly, um, Angely, Angie Donovan, who helped to write and, uh, submit the application for the award. Um, so we look forward to, uh, becoming an all-American city and, uh, I'll let you know in June if that happens.
Do we get money if we win?
Uh, you do not, but we do get significant recognition, uh, throughout the United States as an all-American city.
Thank you.
And if, if I may, oh, you wanna say something about?
Yeah, I got one question on, in the today's paper now, I, I noticed the list of names of all seven, there's seven involved.
Yes.
But the VFW or the Veterans Honor Roll, the chairman of that, I do not see his name on there.
Okay. Well, this is because of the work that they've done and we're trying to bring credit to the community for the work that volunteers have put in. Um, I assure you that this, this project, it's, it's a city park, uh, was certainly something that we put a lot of thought into when we wrote the application, when Angie and, um, Kathy Kopp actually wrote a lot of this portion. So we are trying to bring recognition to the community for the work that our community has done and for the volunteers that did the work. Um, but we do need to get a sample of people to go to Colorado to make a presentation to a jury um, as to why we're deserving of this award. And so perhaps the person you recommended would be someone we should be speaking to. But, um, this is certainly something that the city should be honored for and, um, uh, I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it and I'm glad we did this. So, thank you.
Uh, just would like to ask Larry to also comment on the fact that you are doing listening sessions?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Um, in an effort to get out into the community and, um, learn more about the community and to have people come forward and, and be more open to, to, to talking with the city manager, um, I've started listening sessions throughout the community. Uh, this spring, we're doing four of them. Uh, two of them have already happened. We did one at, um, um, Park Place, Elder Span and then, uh, at the ambulance garage. And I've got one coming up in Valley View Park and another one at, uh, the school on Broadway Street. So, um, hopefully. I can't live without my calendar, uh. On Friday, the nineteenth, we'll be in Valley View Park from one to three. Um, Dennis Cooley from the university is gonna be joining me. And then on Monday, the fifteenth, um, Connie Valenza, the school superintendent, and I are going to be at Neil Wilkins Early Learning Center. And I believe Howard is gonna be joining me for that one as well. Uh, because the school's on Broadway Street, we wanna make sure the public has every opportunity to ask questions about construction projects or about the city of Plattville.
And what time is it?
Excuse me, uh, that one we set up for an evening from six to eight P M.
That's April fifteenth?
Yes, it is. That's a Monday evening.
Would you pass that stuff on to the, uh, editor of the local paper? Maybe they could put something in for us.
We have made a.
Something on television as well.
Okay. We have certainly made every effort to get this information out. Uh, it's on Facebook, Twitter and press releases, yes.
Would you give something to the council?
Sure. If you guys are welcome.
Oh, you can't go.
I did see it on Facebook and I think you had something in the paper.
What was the first date?
On the nineteenth, it was a Friday. So if these are successful, um, we'll do them again in the fall and perhaps every year we'll do four or five of them. So, um, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
When's one in the park?
The nineteenth, from one to three.
Could you give us a list?
Okay.
Yeah. Steve?
Yeah, I just wanna say, uh, since this is my last city council meeting after six years, I want to, uh, tell everybody, uh, particularly the staff, uh, how, uh, helpful they were in the last few years. I think we have a good staff. They've, uh, very cooperative. They help the city council out a lot and, um, they make our job a lot easier. So, uh, thank you. I've enjoyed working with you. And I'm planning on, uh, spending a little less time in meetings and a little more time playing golf. So thank you.
Okay, we will at this point move over and do a work session. We'll take a five-minute break and then go to work session. That's followed by adjournment. And Barb, if you would join us over there, please.
What I'm trying to do with this poor guy here. Bill tells George, he's.